Again, thank you for being with us. My name is Lindsay Heffernan. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Policy and Transit Planning at the MBTA, and we are very excited that you decided to spend your evening with us to talk with us about our proposed fare changes for fiscal year 23, which really means changes as of July 1st to MBTA's fare policy. Tonight is our public hearing, and we look forward to hearing the comments that you all have. If you can go to the next slide, please. I'd like to cover a couple meeting controls and accessibility features before we get started. First of all, we have closed captioning available tonight. You should be able to click on the closed caption bubble at the bottom of your screen in order to bring that up, and you are able to adjust the size there as well. If you can go to the next slide. You are welcome to use the chat for any technical questions. You should see one of the chats says tech support if you are having any difficulties, and our technical assistant will try to help you. Her name is Teri. Thank you, Teri, for being here. We also have a Spanish interpretation for tonight's meeting. I'm going to ask everybody to click the interpretation button at the bottom of your screen and select either English or Spanish. While I expect the majority of you will select English, it does make it easier for the interpreter if we are all in one of the rooms, virtual rooms, tonight. If we can go to the next slide when you're ready. Oh, actually, can you go back for me one more? We also have ASL interpretation available for tonight's meeting. To keep your view setting, we encourage you to keep your view settings in gallery mode. That should be the default setting. You can change that mode by clicking the button which says gallery mode at the top right of your screen. Gallery mode shows all the presenters on the screen together, and this ensures you can see the interpreter as well. When we are sharing slides, however, that can change the view. Your screen should predominantly display the slides with the presenter and interpreter's view moving to a small right corner in the top of your screen. We will attempt to pin the interpreter's video to make it easier. If, however, you have difficulty finding the interpreter, we encourage you to select them, Donald Gibbons, and you can pin him, and he is joined tonight by Shannon Wright. They will be alternating approximately every 20 minutes this evening. I'll also just take a moment to thank our friend Miguel, who's in the Spanish interpretation room tonight. I think that's all the technical questions, so now we can go to the next slide. So again, my name is Lindsay Heffernan, the Assistant General Manager for Policy and Transit Planning, and I'm joined by some MBTA staff here tonight, and I'm going to encourage them to turn their cameras on and introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Steven Povich, and I'm the Director of Fair Policy and Analytics of the MBTA.
Hi, I'm Arthur Prokosch. I'm manager of Fair Tariff at MBTA.
During the course of tonight's meeting, we will definitely be taking comments and questions at the end. But in addition, if you have a somewhat more technical question or you want to put a question in the chat, you'll see Arthur has added to the end of his name, send questions here. You can in the chat find him, and we'll try to make sure we answer any technical questions either as we go or at the opening of the public comment time. And at this point, I'm going to ask to go forward a slide. We have three big goals for our sharing of our proposed fare changes, and I'm going to welcome Steven to walk us through those goals and then some of the technical changes that we have for you this evening.
Thank you, Lindsay, and again, good evening, and thank you for joining us. As Lindsay mentioned, there are three primary goals that we are tackling with the changes to the fares for fiscal year 23. The first relates to reduced fares and our reduced fare riders, and that is to increase equity by filling in gaps in the fare structure for reduced fare riders. We know that there are some products that currently are only available to our full fare riders, and we're looking to fill in areas where reduced fare riders could also make use of those products. The second goal is around ridership. We're looking to maintain stable revenue, given the uncertainties posed by both COVID and our fiscal situation, but we do want to increase ridership wherever possible. And finally, we'd like to simplify the logic of our rules and transition toward rules that will be in place under our new fare system. We understand that the tariff rules, especially related to transfers, are relatively complicated, and we're always looking to make them easier to understand and better serving of the ways that our riders travel. We can go to the next slide, please. So this is a summary of the six changes we have proposed to the board. We'll go through each of these in further detail, but the first three relate to our reduced fare riders, monthly passes, seven-day passes, and validity of the link pass. The second, excuse me, the fourth and fifth changes relate to increasing ridership with the one-day link pass price and the M ticket five-day flex pass. And the sixth change relates to simplification of our system specifically related to our transfer rules. We can go on to the next slide, please. As a number of our changes relate to our reduced fare programs, I thought it would make sense to spend a minute reminding folks of what those programs are. Reduced fares are typically set at about 50% of full fares and apply to certain groups. Those groups include seniors 65+, people with disabilities, middle and high school students, and our youth pass, which is available to 18- to 25-year-olds who meet certain criteria. Next slide, please. So the first change that we'll jump into here is expanding monthly passes to all modes for reduced fare riders. This creates monthly passes on commuter rail, ferry, and express bus, which currently exist and will be priced at about 50% of the full fare prices. Monthly passes on these modes generally break even after around 33 one-way trips. We know that monthly passes provide value and convenience for riders, and that reduced fare riders will be better served taking advantage of monthly passes on these three modes. We can go on to the next slide, please. The next change to our reduced fare rider menu of options is introducing a seven-day link pass. The link pass provides unlimited travel on subway, excuse me, on bus and rapid transit for seven days, and this product we priced at $10. We currently offer a monthly reduced link pass at $30 and reduced single rides on subway and bus, but this again fills in a gap in our reduced fare product offering to give, again, the value and convenience of bulk purchasing, especially in the case where folks may not have the money to pay for a full month at the beginning and instead prefer to pay week by week. We can go on to the next slide, please. The third and final change that relates to reduced fare riders is increasing the validity of the reduced fare link pass to be valid on commuter rail Zone 1A and the Inner Harbor fare. Currently, due to technological limitations and the need on ferry and commuter rail to have visually validated ticket media, it doesn't work to use a reduced fare link pass on those modes. We're working with our technology partners to create a fare media solution that removes this barrier. We know that it makes sense to include commuter rail Zone 1A and the Inner Harbor ferry on the link pass, given that they are priced in line with the subway today, and so it makes sense for those to be covered by the same set of passes. We can go to the next slide, please. We'll now move on to the changes that relate to increasing ridership. The first is lowering the price of the one-day link pass from $12.75 to $11. Again, the link pass allows unlimited subway and local bus trips. The one-day link pass allows this for 24 hours, and at this new price breaks even with about five subway trips in 24 hours. Again, this targets increasing ridership by encouraging more folks to buy passes with free marginal trips, and also is an equity-enhancing change as we know that this product is popular with low-income and minority riders. We can go to the next slide, please. The next change related to increased ridership is making permanent the five-day flex pass on commuter rail. The flex pass was a pilot product that we offered during the COVID pandemic to target hybrid workers who may be commuting less frequently than they did in the past. This product provides five 24-hour commuter rail passes for a 10% discount off of the equivalent 10 one-way trips. This product is available specifically on M Ticket, the mobile ticketing app used on commuter rail. And again, this is currently a pilot product and will become a permanent feature of the fare structure if approved by the board. We can go on to the next slide, please. The last change that we have proposed is a simplification. It has two parts. The first is to allow transfers between express bus routes, so express bus to express bus, and the second is to allow second transfers, so any combination of two buses and one subway legs. This includes bus-bus-subway, subway-bus-bus, and bus-subway-bus trips. We know that our treasure policy, as it stands today, is somewhat more complicated than we'd like, and we want to make sure that our service and system is both easy to understand and meets the needs of riders that are using it each day. So this change is intended to meet some of those goals. We can move to the next slide, please. Finally, I'll share a little bit on the timeline and next steps. We originally presented these changes to the MBTA board in January. We are spending the month of February conducting public outreach. We held a public meeting one week ago on February 10th and the public hearing tonight. We'll continue taking public comment through a few channels that we will get to on the next slide, but public comment will close on March 3rd. We'll collate comments, make any changes based on the feedback, and finalize our analysis of these changes. And in March, we'll bring these back to the board for final approval on the proposed changes. Again, as Lindsay mentioned, these changes are designed to go into effect at the beginning of fiscal year 2023, which begins on July 1st, 2022. With that, I'll pass it back to Lindsay and go to the next slide.
Awesome. Thank you, Steven. All right, so we are about to open up for some public comment, and there are a few different ways that you can make public comment. You can, I'll explain how in a moment, share your feedback with us, but you can also email us or have a conversation with a community liaison. All comments are equally valued and weighted. If you joined a meeting last week and you told us some feelings, we've documented it. You don't need to say it again. If you're passionate and you want to, we will give you the time, but I do want everyone to know if you've shared something with us already, we are absolutely collating all of those responses. If you can go to the next slide. So in order to make a comment with us tonight, you must virtually raise your hand. To do this on a computer, you can press the Alt and Y key or click the raise hand button at the bottom center of your screen. On a mobile device, tap the raised hand button on the bottom center of your screen, and on the phone, you're going to dial star nine. Once you raise your hand, you'll be added to the queue with others who have raised their hands. I will call on folks on a first-come, first-served basis. When it's your turn to speak, I will say your name or the last four digits of your phone number and let you know that I am unmuting you. You will need to confirm that you'd like to be unmuted before beginning to speak. If you're on the phone, an automated recording will let you know that you are unmuted, and you may speak as soon as that recording finishes. Once unmuted, everyone in the meeting can hear you. Before asking your question or making your comment, please do state your name and if you have any organizational affiliation. We are going to ask that you make either one question or comment at a time so we can ensure that everyone who would like to speak gets the chance to. We don't have too many people here tonight, so I'm sure we'll have time for everybody. Certainly, if you have an additional question or comment, we would encourage you to raise your hand again. As soon as you've finished your question, you will be muted again. Well, I will also alternate between trying to answer questions that have been put in the chat, and so bear with us as we move between commenters and questions from the chat. I would like to encourage everybody to as best as possible, speak slowly. We have multiple interpreters working with us this evening and individuals doing closed captioning. If you have something written that you have prepared to read tonight, please know that your reading speed is probably too fast, so take a lot of breaths in there to allow the interpreters to catch up. And with that, I'm going to welcome people to raise their hand if they'd like to make a comment this evening. I can start with a real question from the chat, and then I'll be coming to Ms. Baxter in just a minute. Are the seven-day link passes for seven consecutive days or, say, can it be used or can it be used, say, within 30 days? So seven-day link passes expire exactly after seven days, and those are seven consecutive days. Ms. Baxter, I am unmuting you.
Okay, yeah. Well, I have the, my comment is, I did write a letter that while the, while the, your programs are passing passes already, you help increase equity for a few people, but you're not really hitting the equity problem. You're leaving out a lot of working people, low-income working people and others. That I've seen people have to count pennies to see if they can take a bus. I've had clients that are working, they take all buses because they can't afford a T. There's a whole group of low-income people that have been left out, some of them are special workers. And one thing I suggest, like, if you want to, for verification, maybe get, they're going to adult education classes or, and there are agencies like ABCD that you might partner with that do income, that do income verification for people not on programs for other things. And I think the low income, we really need that for real equity.
Thank you for the comment, Ms. Baxter, and I will certainly note the desire on your part to see us have a low-income fare. Thank you. And if I can unmute last name, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, DeBarros.
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Louise. Yeah, hello, my name is Emmanuel DeBarros. I'm from ACE, I'm a consultant for community environment. Try to slow down. I'm Director of Development and Community Engagement, and also ACE is a member of Public Transit, Public Transit, Public Good Coalition, and we've also been a nonprofit and based in Roseberry for the past 25 years. So right now, I'm 25 years old, about to be 26. Now I like to refer to the U-Pass for others in the same position as myself. The U-Pass is a great program for us, and right now, the U-Pass is a low-income-based pass that's most, for most of our riders. A low-income fare would save subway and train riders an average of 500 a year. So please do not leave low-income riders, especially for some of the ages are aging out of the U-Pass. And currently, a lot of low-income people that make up some of the community riders, even though lines service a number of communities with a very private rate. And also, I would just like to say with, it's even a 500 more that will help me and others worry less for many expenses and for the empty administration and our legislators that's something to think about. And personally, $500 will help with future savings and future expenses of a household and for many families that they can rely on, that rely on the transportation. That same will help number many household expenses from rent, mortgage payments, food access, and health support in the household. And all of the reduced fare could put nearly 50 million a year back into pockets of low-income riders. And this last week, just solidarity, I asked for the MBTA staff and board members to please have that 40 million, about, that's 8%, of the money to help low-income riders throughout the system to afford the bus, subway, community rail, and community rail fares. And I would just like to say thank you and making sure some of the implements are looking good, but I would just like to make sure have some of the passes be more accessible to our riders virtually and on the streets such as T stations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeBarros. I've, we've been typing fast back here, but captured all of that and appreciate the concern for individuals aging out of the youth pass and bringing more, more folks, the affordability that you think they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna unmute last name, Moran.
Hey, good evening, Lindsay. Good evening, everyone. Matt Moran with the Boston Transportation Department. First off, just thank you guys very much for this great presentation, for your time tonight. We really appreciate it. I know this isn't an easy job, so really appreciate all your efforts here.
Thank you, Matt.
Couple points just for, you know, from the city of Boston. So the first point I want to mention is a goal of Meriwu and the goal of the city of Boston is to make the T completely free. We know that free transit fares improve equity, aid in our climate challenge goals, and help aid in our mode share goals as well. As noted by Meriwu, there's no time left to delay in addressing climate change and income inequality. Instead of fare hikes, we should be discussing bold ideas to invest in transit, bold ideas like a free transit system. And where we've seen this work so far is on the 28th, and we've seen ridership go up significantly, and we are very excited to begin work on the 23 and 29 just in a few weeks. The second point is that while our main goal is to provide a free T, we believe that expanding fare equity is critical now, which is why we very much support the proposals that are being put forward. So obviously, the expanded flexibility for low-income riders by allowing the seven-day pass, the expanded monthly pass for all T services, and, you know, including commuter rail ferries and express buses, we think will help boost ridership and enhance, as I said before, equity. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that while we very much support what you guys are doing here, we wanted to say we think you should go a little bit further even. And this is in two key areas. First, we want you to consider expanding eligibility to all ages for the reduced fare programs. So right now, there's, you know, the sort of gap if you're below 25 or younger than 65, I'm sorry, over 25, younger than 65, you're not eligible for an income-adjusted fare program or Medicare for that matter. So we think that this would help with working families in particular and others who need a reduced fare transit system. Second thing is, we believe that you should simplify even further, go further in simplifying the fare system. We think that the current fare system is a bit confusing, and this is exemplified nowhere more so than in Hyde Park, where we have three stations all within about a mile of each other or even less, Hyde Park Station, Reedville Station, Fairmount Station, and they are all in different zones. So you pay anywhere from a subway fare all the way up to $7 for your trip from Hyde Park to get to points in downtown. So we would encourage you to standardize the fares across the city of Boston to all Zone 1A to alleviate that headache that a lot of our riding public goes through on a daily basis. So with that, thank you again very much, Lindsay, and to all of your team, and look forward to hearing more.
Thank you, Matt, for all of those comments. I appreciate them and understand where they're all coming from. I'm going to ask for the last name. Ophongbo? How did I do okay?
You were pretty close.
Okay.
Yep, it's, hi, so my name is Endu O'Fable. I'm a Boston resident and a resident of the Hyde Park neighborhood. I am similar into Matt Moran's, in which I would like to know if there's any notions or actions toward adjusting the commuter rail zoning with emphasis centered around the commuter rail stations that are within the city limits, so Hyde Park, Reedville. And they're all within one mile of each other, as Matt has mentioned before. But, you know, Fairmount, which is not even, I think it's 0.4 miles away from the Hyde Park Station, is significantly less in terms of fare. And as Matthew had mentioned before, just standardizing what the Zone 1A represents, which is stations that are within the city. I think that that's very important when it comes to topics and subjects as we speak on today, just to make so that it's fair across all avenues. So that's my comment, and my question is, is that something that's on the horizon?
I'm gonna, I'll say, appreciate the comment. It's noted historically, and in 2020, the team can correct me if I have this right, the MBTA completed a commuter rail fare study looking at particularly those Zone 1A, 1 and 2, and some of the recommendations of that study were to smooth out the fare increases between those zone jumps. That study did not recommend the moving of more stations into Zone 1A because while it's important for individuals in the city of Boston, we also hear that comment from other municipalities with stations close by. So while we've done some work on it, I think it's fair to say we're not proposing it right now, but it is well documented that many individuals have made comments that we should be looking at that again. I thank you very much for your, for your comment.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Of course. Um, and I have, uh, the last name of Lou, please, if you should be able to unmute now.
Uh, hello, uh, my name is Sebastian Lou. I'm currently a resident of Boston, living in the Chinatown community. And I did want to ask about regards to the, um, the, the work towards having like almost a near-free transit system. I want to know if the MBTA does have any plans to expand the system, especially for the buses. Um, more particularly so in terms of when it comes to outside of the Boston area, like beyond the silver line and beyond the frequent, um, frequent bus routes, you know, and to ensure the increase of bus ridership, especially since, because of COVID.
Yeah, the, they, uh, thank you, Mr. Lou. The, um, uh, the MBTA does not have a current plan or proposal to make the entire system free or certain modes free. Um, and some of what you're referring to is partnerships that we have with other parties that are often reimbursing fares. Partnerships with Massport around the airport, partnerships with the city of Boston or the Route 28, um, to, as, as was noted by Mr. Moran, to be expanded soon to the 23 and 29. Um, the, the T staff has presented in the past and will be coming forward to our board again soon, talking about the overall revenue loss of some of those proposals. Um, and as of right now, we don't have that, that revenue. Um, and so, well noted, some of the concerns that individuals have, but that is certainly a concern for the staff to put forward, um, such a policy, given that we don't have the, the current revenue, and that would likely lead to, um, some sort of impacts on, on service. But I thank you very much and, um, for, for the comment. If a couple of comments I see in the chat, I've not been paying attention to, let me pop over to answer some of those. So, uh, question or comment, excuse me. Um, uh, certain monthly passes can be used for the Hingham Hall ferries as well as for Zones 1 through 5, as well as for subways and buses. During the pandemic and post-pandemic period, wouldn't it make sense for the five-day flex pass um, to also be available for both commuter rail and ferry transit? Sometimes we, we call it commuter ferry, uh, to haul and hang them on the South Shore. Um, and we have a couple of things going on here. We continue to assess options for passes um, with commitment levels between single riders and monthly passes. The five-day flex is sort of an in-between option if you don't travel as much to warrant a monthly pass um, on all the modes, including ferries. Um, the five-day flex, we could expand that on commuter rail partially because of the technology on that uses M-ticket. Um, and, uh, currently ferry is purchased differently. So one of the reasons why we're making that expansion, uh, proposed expansion for our board for that product now. Um, I think I have another com- comment in the chat. Again, if you want to make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand. Um, I have, uh, there's a comment for someone looking to write an article about this, and it looks like you got a name of someone you can connect with, so I'll hold that one off. Okay, could you, uh, please explore addressing fare equity between commuter rail and ferry fares in New York City? Uh, the highly successful recently introduced ferry system run by the city charges revenues that are competitive with subway fares. It would be helpful to know how these fare differentials come about. Uh, I am. Absolutely, we are in the beginning stages of a comprehensive fare policy review. Um, and part of the, and many of you may know, we are moving towards our, um, a more modernized fare system where we would have one piece of technology across all, all of the modes. Um, so you wouldn't use M-ticket on commuter rail and a Charlie card on bus and rapid transit. Um, as that flexibility gets closer to coming online, we are engaging in a big planning study at the T to do a comprehensive look at overall. What are some of the fare? How do, how do we want to use that flexibility? And what are the various implications of, um, you know, offering different passes, different programs to people? Um, changing, changing things as have been some suggestions proposed tonight? And what would the implications be for all riders? So a real comprehensive look, so I will certainly make sure we add, uh, looking more, more closely at, uh, at ferries. So thank you very much for the comment. Um, I have a question. Um, will future discusses on MBTA finances and expenses be open to the public or public inquiry in the future? Um, uh, in the coming future, excuse me. And so all of our, uh, board meetings are public, open to the public. All of the records of the board meetings are, are public. Oh, this team has presented to the board, uh, numerous times about some of the policies being suggested tonight, such as on, um, uh, lower-income fares. We will actually be back before our board next week on, um, on some, uh, on some of these topics. And so if there, uh, is a particular document that you feel like we haven't shared and you're looking for, uh, you feel free to let us know, and we can make sure we can, we can get that to you. So we certainly aim to be transparent, um, about all things, but I would say especially about our, our finances. I'm just looking to the team to tell me if I've missed any questions. I don't see any other raised hands this evening. And I want to give people a minute because many of you joined, and if you joined, maybe you have something you want to tell us. And I'll take a moment to check in, um, with our, in our Spanish interpretation room. And just if the interpreter knows if there's any questions in that room, you can certainly let us know. Oh, I have a hand here. Um, it looks like it's Christine, please. I'm unmuting you.
Hi, thanks. So, uh, I see that there are some progress, uh, happening in being able to reduce fares for certain folks, um, which is a step in the right direction. Um, but obviously, the amount of years that we have gone through, um, hikes in the fares has been astronomical. Um, it seemed like it was year after year after year, the rates were going up and up and up. And, you know, when you used to pay, um, you know, like $50 for a monthly pass, and it's now nearly $100. Um, and, and obviously, things with the pandemic made it worse, um, because you weren't getting any revenue because nobody was taking the T. Um, and there are plenty of people who have either left their jobs or aren't bothering, um, because they work remotely now. Um, you can't expect everybody to actually, um, be taking the T, uh, as much as it used to once be. Um, and obviously, those changes, um, I imagine that, uh, you know, whether the bus or the trains or commuter rail, um, that there are. I'm assuming that somebody has data about that. Um, and I'm curious to find out, um, if knowing that ridership has, even though it's increased over the past year, um, it's still probably lower than it was pre-COVID. And due to that, doesn't it make sense to actually lower fees in other areas? Um, and, uh, and being able to, you know, have other options besides, um, you know, one that is a flex pass, um, that needs to be, and then maybe I'm not understanding it properly, um, on, you know, within five-day, you know, having a five-day flex pass or a week, whatever it may be. Um, because obviously, you know, the amount of people buying monthly passes is kind of not happening anymore, or it's a lot lower. Um, what other options are there than paying full price when you are not a senior and not a youth? Like there, there has to be, and I'm, and, and I want to know what the goals are of the T. Um, because, you know, this is one, you know, or the second, you know, two meetings. Um, but, but what are their goals and, and what is going to be happening, um, in the future? And being able to make sure that this is going to be sustainable, um, for people? Because we also don't want fires happening when you bring in new cars on the orange line or the red line or, you know, the, the old, um, you know, obviously, issues that have been plaguing, um, because things don't get fixed properly. They're not up to date. Um, people fall at a stairwell and then die. You know, that there's a lot of fear as well. And so, you know, there's a lot of things to address. Um, but I'm not going to go through everything, but those are the main ones.
So I, um, let me try, let me try to respond to some of that. Um, there's a lot there, and I really appreciate the comment. Um, a, a couple of, couple of matters. Um, the MBTA has an operating budget and a capital budget. The capital budget largely we use to make some of those investments that I completely agree with you are critically needed, um, both to address safety, um, maintenance of our system and when we have the resources to think about system expansions. On the other side of sort of the, the ledger is our operating budget, and that is where, um, we're paying for staff, uh, it's a big part of the cost there. Um, sort of running the T, and it fare revenue folds back into the operations. So fare revenue is not paid to sort of build a better T. Um, it's used to help keep it, keep it running. Um, I am going to encourage one of my colleagues, um, if they can. The T does have a comprehensive fare policy in terms of how do we come up with these ideas? Um, that was approved by our prior board, the Fiscal and Management Control Board. And what we are trying to do with our fare policy is balance two things. Um, ridership and revenue. And we have, um, statutory requirements, um, and also fiscal requirements to ensure that there is adequate revenue. Um, but we're balancing those on ridership because you're right, if no one rides, there is no revenue. Uh, and so, uh, when we, when we have historically raised fares, that will reduce revenue, even if it might, um, or so it will reduce ridership, uh, even if it might have some revenue offsets. In addition, we make those decisions based on what is technologically possible. Um, and so there are ideas that people have raised that we might like and think are good, but we don't currently have the technology, uh, to make some of those, some of those changes. Um, and all of that is, I think about under a big umbrella of what is equitable. Um, and so we have to, we have to balance all of those different, all of those different things, a bit of a teeter-totter. Um, and, uh, and so while I appreciate the desire, uh, I think around, um, really targeting, um, lowering the fares, um, as of right now, the T doesn't have a offset for the revenue that we get from fares in order to keep the system running. And what we hear from people is that they would like the fares to go down and to be more service. And unfortunately, those are often in a little bit of tension. I hope that's helpful. Stephen, is there more? There was a question about COVID and our COVID response. Is there anything you would, you might want to add to that? Or did I cover it enough?
I would add a, a couple of things about the idea of changing prices in reaction to COVID, and we do appreciate the, the idea. Um, we've focused on our prices and our ridership throughout the pandemic and have found that, generally speaking, we believe our ridership is down not because of our prices, but because of differences in people's travel behavior, whether they're commuting less or just traveling in different ways than they did before. In addition, we see that the T has not really lost share of people's travel behavior to vehicles. The travel overall is down, but not to other modes specifically. And finally, we do continuous surveys of our riders to try and understand whether we are close to new travel patterns that are sort of final and steady state in nature. And we don't believe, based on what we're hearing from the riders we survey, that we've reached a new normal. And so for that reason, we don't feel it's appropriate to change the fares in reaction to the way people are traveling today. So those are just a few of the ways we think about it, but we are continuously looking at the fares, the prices of our passes, the prices of our single rides. And, and again, we do appreciate that comment.
Thank you so very much, and I want to thank you, Christine, for making, making the comment. I do appreciate it. Um, at this point in time, I'm not seeing any other comments either coming in on the chat or, um, or, and I thank you, Miguel, for offering that in the chat in Spanish. If, um, what I can do, it is 6:50. Um, the T staff can hang around here for a few more, a few more minutes. Um, but, uh, why don't I, I think there's one more slide that we can go to to just say what's, what's next? Is there another slide, Sylvia? If not, I can just say it. Those are the summary review, and go one more for me if you don't mind. Maybe not. Oh, oh, there's just a thank you. Sorry. That's not what I thought it was going to say. Uh, our public comment is open through March 3rd. Um, and so if there are individuals who want to, who you think want to comment or should know about this, there, we're very much willing and eager to hear from them. After that point in time, we will be collating all of the comments. We'll be looking at them and thinking about whether, whether we as the staff want to make any changes or tweaks to the proposals that, that we put before you tonight. Uh, that is a, this is an iterative process for us. And then we'll be going back to the board on March 24th, I think is the right date. Yes, it's March 24th. Thank you, March 24th. Uh, and, um, at that time, we'll also be presenting to the board a fare equity analysis, and that will also be a public record and posted on our, on our website. Um, saying, looking at the, whether there are any, um, burdens particularly to low-income people or riders of color by any of the proposals that were, we've made this evening. And then we'd be asking the board to vote. Um, the board is, can do whatever the board would like to do, uh, with those proposed suggestions by the staff. And as, um, was mentioned, none of these changes would go into effect until July 1st in order to make sure that we can have adequate time, uh, in order to educate our, our riders um, around, around the changes that are coming, because we know these things can change people's patterns. Um, and so that is our, our plans for, for next steps. Um, I want to thank you all very much for coming and being with us tonight. We certainly appreciate your, your being here and spending the time with us. If, um, anybody would like to, uh, raise their hand and has another comment to make, I'm happy to take, take one of those, and thank you for dropping into the chat where you can see, um, the link to how to, how to learn a little bit more about what's, what's going on. Otherwise, I want to thank you so much for, uh, being with us tonight. Uh, uh, thank you for the, for the clap. I appreciate it. Uh, and I hope you all have a really lovely evening. Take care. Thank you to all of our interpreters. I appreciate you.